What a packed house, so nice to see so many people here tonight. We are waiting for Carolyn. Sorry to keep you waiting. Before we get started, I would like to just have a moment of silence since it is the 22nd year anniversary of the 9/11 tragedy. So just if we can take a quick moment of silence to never forget. All right. We're going to get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first thing is public comment. Is there any public comment on anything that is not on the agenda tonight? If so, please come forward, state your name and address. No? Okay. You have a comment on something other than what's on our agenda? Come do it now, it's fine.
Just real quickly, Benjamin Hartreft, Lansdale, Pennsylvania. I wanted to express to the township that we need, and do apologize, we need more educational stuff for special needs and for more inclusion. I saw a post today from Culture City that one of the schools did a sensory inclusion for one of the schools. And I feel like our township needs more inclusivity and inclusion for special needs. And I feel that's what the piece we're missing. So if we could step up as a township to being more inclusive, I think that's what we can do. I've seen like more people with more inclusive stuff, like more like Culture City, IBCCS who does the theme park stuff with autism. There's a lot of stuff I would love to talk with you guys about more ideas with. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Ben. Announcement of executive session. Mr. Walco.
Yes, prior to the meeting, we had an executive session where litigation matters were discussed.
Thank you. Item number five is our consent agenda. I'm going to move to approve the consent agenda as presented for the following minutes of the August 28th board meeting, payment of bills for September 11th, 2023, escrow release number four, The Meadows at Parkview by Toll Brothers, escrow release number six, CSW Luxor, seven, Montgomeryville LP, Weststrom, Montgomeryville, and escrow release number one, Higher Rock Residential Development.
I'll second the motion.
Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
The moment everyone's been waiting for, I think. We're going to swear in some new police officers tonight. It's very exciting for all of us. I will turn that over to Chief Bending.
Yes, good evening. On March 14th of this year, Officer David Donlap retired from the Montgomery Township Police Department after 40 years of service to our community. This retirement, combined with the creation of a professional standards position within the department, has resulted in two vacancies within the department's patrol division. The recruit hiring process was initiated in April of this year for the position of recruit police officers. The police department hiring process consists of a resume review, a physical agility test, two police oral review boards, and a background investigation, which includes polygraph examination, neighborhood, and employer interviews. Before the board this evening for consideration for appointment to the positions of recruit police officers are our two top candidates, Michael Pokert and Jake Millivoy. Background on our two candidates. Michael, Michael Pokert was born and raised in northeast Philadelphia, graduating from North Catholic High School, which will make Officer McGwigan proud if he is here. He attended La Salle University where he obtained his bachelor's degree in communication. After college, Michael enlisted in the Army National Guard and served from 2010 until 2018. Michael left the Army holding the rank of First Lieutenant and serving in Operation Enduring Freedom. In 2014, Michael joined the Philadelphia Police Department where he's been gainfully employed since today. Our second candidate, Jacob Jake Millivoy. Jake was born and raised here in Montgomery Township. He graduated from North Penn High School in 2018 and attended Temple University where he received a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. Jake attended the Philadelphia Police Academy and graduated in March of this year, subsequently starting his career with the Temple University Police Department. Jake has also been a volunteer firefighter with the Fire Department of Montgomery Township since 2017. So I'd like to call Officer Pokert up, Michael Pokert and his family will do the swearing in.
Hi, Michael.
I'm Michael Pokert.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will enforce the laws of the Commonwealth.
And that I will enforce the laws of the Commonwealth.
And the ordinances of Montgomery Township.
And the ordinances of Montgomery Township.
And that I will discharge the duties of police officer with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of police officer with fidelity.
I do further swear.
I do further swear.
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce the law without consideration to a person's race, color, sex, religious creed, sexual orientation, age, national origin, ancestry, handicap, or disability.
That I will uphold, obey, and enforce the law without consideration to a person's race, color, sex, religious creed, sexual orientation, age, national origin, ancestry, handicap, or disability.
We'll just let the room clear for a minute.
No, you did good.
That was quite a showing. Okay. All right. Such a proud moment. One of our own. All right, the next thing is number seven, Community and Recreation Center Capital Improvement Plan, Carolyn McCreary.
Thank you. This evening, we're going to hear from Doug Taylor with Dewey Engineering to talk about the capital improvement plan for the rec center. As you know, the rec center is approaching 10 years old. We are already working on some concrete repairs outside. Doug's firm went through the building with a fine tooth comb with the assistance of Floyd Schaefer and looked for any other information we had. Greg Reif was also involved in this process. Brian Shapiro was involved in it because this is all going to be put together as part of our budget document that we're doing annually. And as we told you, the community improvement plan or investment plan is a living, breathing document. And the rec center is certainly a crucial part of that. So tonight Doug is here just to sort of give you an overview of the report that was included in your packet and how we are going to utilize it going forward. Good evening, Doug.
Good evening, thank you. So I will be brief along your agenda here, and I'm glad to see that crowd wasn't here for this capital plan. It was a very nice event, though. So I do want to thank Carolyn, and I do want to thank Floyd and Greg and Brian for your assistance with this plan from the get-go. It was well executed with a team approach, and that was appreciated, so thank you. Again, I'm going to go through the binder quickly. If you want to ask questions as we go, please feel free. I don't have any problem stopping and answering your questions as we go. So the capital plan is intended to provide, you know, an annual update to accurately reflect the conditions of your facility at any given time. So it is a living document, it is dynamic, and it is intended to change based on the use of the building and what might be important as we go along. And it does assist with avoiding spikes and surprises in your budget. You can identify what the issues are each year and work with the township to provide planning and address those projects as we go. So there's a logic matrix that we include in the document under tab two, and that allows us to run each item that we identify as we walk through the building. We brought our multidisciplined team of folks through. We had mechanical plumbing, electrical engineers, we had roofing experts, site experts, and we walked through. Each item that's identified is run through the logic matrix to score the item so that we can use that to determine what the highest priorities are based on this logic matrix. And I won't review all of this, but there's a higher level of scoring for safety and the number of people affected each day by the items. And then the rest is physical conditions, domino effect, impact to community, energy sustainability, life cycle, age, and remaining life of the components. There's then an index that shows you how we prioritize. And if there's redundancies in systems in the building, then it wouldn't be as high a priority as it is if there is only one of an item. So then tab three is the summary of the building information. So this is where we really provide you with the narrative of all of our findings to give you an understanding of what we saw and what our suggestions or recommendations might be, or based on feedback from the township in some cases. And we do this for all of the building components. So there's an exterior building component section, the exterior, and an interior building components section with photos, with the written descriptions of each item. And as you can see, HVAC systems, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing are also included in the plan along with site components. We then take those items, and I know this isn't really legible, but it's just intended to show how we organize the items that we identify. We provide the description, we provide the year of the planned work when we know what the year may be, and we run them through the matrix, we show the scoring on the sheet, and then we provide a estimated cost for each item as well on the sheet. So you can see what the estimated cost of each item is, which is construction cost only without any professional fees, just to give you an idea. And they're categorized, so we can sort this in many different ways if we need to. And then this is in a large section of primarily some of the work that we're doing now. We did identify the concerns with some of the site concrete, the stairs, the retaining walls, some structural retaining wall that needed some repair and some sidewalk repairs. So we have the estimate. And the nice thing about this is when we go out to bid, we have an understanding of what we expect the bid to be, and we can compare that against our estimate. And hopefully, we're, you know, within close proximity to our number. So in this case, we were, I think, about $25,000 under budget when we bid this work. But again, we did have some good competitive bids for that individual project. The other thing we do, and in this case, we only have one building as part of the plan. And in a lot of cases, we may have multiple buildings, and we'll list all of those buildings and give you a summary for all of the facilities. In this case, we have one building. We list the size of the building, we list the building history, we list the estimated cost if you were to totally renovate the building, if you were to replace the building minus site work, and the capital improvements that were identified as part of our study. We then take a look at the total capital improvements as a percentage of renovations. When that number reaches 60%, it's time to think about, you know, the total renovations kind of project. In this case, we're at 30%. And some of that has to do with replacing some of the lighting, the fluorescent lighting with LED lighting, not necessarily something that has to be done, but something that wants to be considered down the road. So the percentage is not as high or shocking as that 30%. The building's in very good shape. Floyd and team do a great job taking care of the building. That's clearly evident by what we saw when we walked through. So you guys really do a nice job. Tab six is reserved for a draft master plan. If we do, you know, identify some projects that need to be done, we can begin to plan this work over a series of years, list the estimated cost of those projects, and develop some Gantt schedules or some other project timelines in the document that we can publish as this is updated. Tab seven is a summary of the roof systems. In this case, you know, we take a shot of the roof and we identify each area by square footage, when the roof was installed, what type of roof system it is. And you can see from this section, the locations, the square foot of each area, the manufacturer, when it was installed, what the warranty is, and who did the work, and when we need to consider re-roofing this project. So again, the roof is a 20-year warranty that puts us about 12 years away from when a roof system needs to be replaced. But it's important that you know that in 12 years, you have to start thinking about budgeting for a roof. You don't want to wait until that 12th year to say, oh, we need a good bit of money for a roof replacement. So we can start to plan now and start putting those funds away for those respective items as we go. And then we have tab eight, which is basically the section where we record what projects we've performed with the township. In this case, this is the concrete sidewalk and stair repairs. We list what the work is, in this case, the project number and the estimated cost to do the work, where the actual bids came in, the variance between the bid and our estimate, the contract amount, who did the work. So we'll have a history of who did the work, we'll know when the work was performed, we'll understand when warranties expire, and who to call if we have any issues. And at the end, we'll record the final cost of the project. And you can continue to keep this list as we perform projects throughout the facility. Tab nine is reserved really for building information, miscellaneous items that you might want, or if we have to perform some investigative report at some point for something on the building, we can put that report in tab nine. But it's really reserved for whatever may come up. It could be something that's asked for by the township, or as I said, some investigative reporting. And tab 10 is the projected five-year capital improvement plan. This is where we start to identify with the township what areas need to be addressed and what the cost may be. In this case, we list the actual cost. For example, in number one, the estimated cost of the concrete work was about $302,000 in totality. If you were to defer that work to the summer of '24, you could see at a 5% increase, it bumps to 317, '25 is 333. So it shows you the escalation of costs if you defer projects. It gives you some idea of what that impact would be, should you wait. And sometimes you have to, but it just gives you some sense. The parking lot restoration for year two is something that should be considered based on our observations. on our observations, is something more immediate to think about. I know there was some striping recently redone, but the asphalt is at a point in its life where it would be beneficial to do crack repairs, to come in and put a seal coat on it, and then re-stripe it, and that will give you some additional life. Because if you don't perform that preventative maintenance, you can spend up to, you know, two to four times the cost to do it, you know, later. So you start getting water in the cracks and freeze thaw, and Greg and his team could tell you what happens when that occurs. And that goes for any of the other items. There's certainly other items to consider in here. HVAC replacement could be as soon as seven years away. It's got a 15- to 20-year life expectancy for some of that equipment. So when we looked at that, we did take a look at some of the units that are kind of above ceiling cavities that are difficult to get to. That's something we'd want to consider, trying to get those in an area that they're more easily maintained. And that stuff will work with Floyd and team on down the road as we know that's coming. But that's still, you know, in the distant future. Otherwise, you know, we'll continue to work with the township to develop these plans and identify what the needs are, and based on your budget. Again, we have to work closely with you on what your budget is, your annual budget, to maintain the facility. There's other things I didn't go over, but they're in the plan. You can see some of the needs in the tab that shows those items. And I guess the other thing I should say is there are times where you might want to consider performing, if you're thinking about perhaps putting in electric-powered lighting in the parking lot as an example versus solar-powered lighting over time. That's something where you're going to have to do some trenching through the asphalt to get conduits and power from the electrical room to the lighting. That would be a time to team that with the parking lot construction so that you're getting some efficiencies by working with paving repairs at the same time. We actually have two numbers in the plan. One is to kind of revive the solar-powered lighting, new batteries, and give them some new life so that they're actually illuminated and brighter throughout the, you know, the days that are more cloudy so that they have a little more energy. So those are things that are in the plan. And again, this is just a blow up of the plan that I just talked about, but you can see as we go down. For example, in 2003, we show the cost of the concrete repairs. As we go down the column, there's a 25% permits fees and contingency number, and then a 5% design contingency. So those soft costs are added to that construction estimate to get you the 393 so that we're looking at covering all of those fees when we're providing estimates for you. And that is it. That's a very quick overview of the plan and how it works, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
Anybody have any questions?
I just had a quick question because there was something that, there's an area adjacent to the stairwell where there's clearance that doesn't meet code. They said it was 68 feet is code, but it doesn't read that requirement. And how much of a risk is that? And is that something that happened because code changed, or was this not built to the correct specification?
It's very close. I think six foot eight is the minimum, and it's within a half an inch maybe, but it's not six foot eight.
Oh, okay.
And the primary reason for that code is visually impaired. Folks that are walking, you know, with an aid, they're looking for, you know, they don't want to bump their heads, so their cane wants to find some sort of stop before they would bump their head in an area like that. But I don't think there's a big issue there. It's not a high-traffic area. It's not. There's furniture, and there's TVs, and you guys have done a nice job kind of buffering that. But again, that's something you can put a bar across the floor on that actually assists by finding that bar. It's something that's done in new buildings to comply with that code. I'm not sure what the code was in, you know, in '15 when the project was performed, so maybe it's grandfathered in this case, but it's something, you know, that I would address eventually.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing I wanted to ask is, I know that we have solar parking lot lights, and they are not as reliable as we'd like, so looking to improve those would be great. One of the things that we've talked about, at least when we're ready for 100 meetings, is whether or not solarization would be a possibility on the roof or in the parking lot area, et cetera, and adding some charging stations for cars, which would be fed by the solar. So those are the type of things that I would like to see possibly worked into this kind of program, to see what the feasibility is, costs, and things like that as well. That's something that we could possibly do as well.
We've submitted a grant application with DVR PC for solar in the parking lot, charging stations, including over there because of having the neighborhood across the street. Those people would be able to park there. Visitors to the rec center would be able to charge their cars, as well as people who were there for, say, meetings during the day when the facility is rented. We included that in the package with a couple of our other parks, as well as the township facility here. If we don't get the grant, which we should know, I think later this year, we would certainly start factoring that in with our budget.
Absolutely. So I just wanted to make sure that we're coordinating those thoughts and projects and grants together with what's being done on the ground from you. So appreciate that.
Thank you. Those are sections we can add to the plans, you know, improvements beyond the preventative maintenance projects that are in the book. So we can start to create a separate tab for projects like that.
Just one other quick question. We've heard you discuss it as part of this and saw some of the supporting images related to the concrete repairs that need to be made. How pressing and urgent are those? You know, I'm trying to follow the matrix, but there's like a lot of content here. How pressing and urgent would you say those repairs are to the concrete, particularly the stairs?
They're very pressing. I mean, I guess that project is approved and moving forward. So that's going to happen start this month. But it is a pressing project. The reinforcing bars within the nosings of the stairs, as you go up the stairs, you can see the rust coming down, that they're probably too close to the nosing. They're getting corroded, and they're not epoxy-coated bars. And so there's some things that we'll do differently in our project than was done before. And there's, you know, some issues, it appears, with the concrete pour back when it was poured. Looks like it may have set up quickly and maybe in the hot sun. But, you know, the timing of our project is perfect. This is a good time of year to pour concrete. It's not going to set up quickly on the contractors, and we will have testing agencies onboard observing the work, along with township officials who will be observing the work. And I'm confident we'll give you a much better product than you've had before. But it is pressing. It is important that we're doing that now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks for your time.
Appreciate your time.
So number eight, public hearing for the proposed ordinance to amend Township zoning code for mixed-use complex by conditional use in the S Shopping Center. I'm going to turn it over to the solicitor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we will open up this hearing on the proposed text amendment to the Township zoning code. Seven exhibits that I'd like to mark before I turn it over briefly to Ms. McConnell, Director of Planning and Zoning, just for a brief background, if that'd be appropriate for her, and then turn it over to the applicant's attorney. Board Exhibit One is the proposed ordinance itself. Board Exhibit Two is the application dated June 8, 2023, for this text change to the zoning code, which will impact the property at 511-521 Stump Road. This was filed on behalf of the applicant, Harry Hassan, by his attorney, Kristen Pianzio from Hamburg, Rubin, Hall &amp; Maxwell &amp; Lupin. Board Exhibit Three is the proof of submission of this ordinance to the Montgomery County Law Library, which was submitted on August 21, 2023. Board Exhibit Four is the proof of this proposed ordinance to the Montgomery Township Planning Commission, which was reviewed on August 17, 2023. Board Exhibit Five is the proof of submission to the Montgomery County Planning Commission for review, which was submitted on July 6, 2023. Board Exhibit Six is an extension letter from Ms. Pianzio, the attorney for the applicant, dated July 12, 2023, giving an extension to hold tonight's hearing on this application until tonight. Board Exhibit Four is the proof of publication in the reporter newspaper for tonight's hearing on this ordinance, and that was published twice on August 25, 2023, and September 1, 2023. So the hearing for tonight is just on the proposed text change. In association with this proposed text change, I believe there would be an additional, if approved, would be an additional conditional use hearing and a land development application and subsequent review for this board. Those proposed changes that this ordinance would bring about have additionally been reviewed by township staff, including the Department of Fire Services, just to make sure there's no unintended consequences of that text amendment. But I will turn it over briefly to Ms. McConnell, just for a summary of what this ordinance is proposed to do, unless Ms. Pianzio wanted to address that herself.
Well, tonight, we have Ms. Pianzio here on behalf of our applicant. They are proposing the zoning text amendment for redevelopment of their property located at 511-521 Stump Road by adding provisions to permit a new mixed-use complex consisting of non-residential and residential uses on a single tract of land. She'll present their proposal. Keep in mind that this text amendment would affect every property with the shopping center zoning designation, not just his standalone property.
Good evening. I'm Kristen Pianzio from Hamburg, Rubin, Hall &amp; Maxwell &amp; Lupin. I'm here tonight with Mr. Hassan. Harry's there in the front row. Behind him is Kevin, his son, and Andrew Randazzo, who's our architect, who's been working with us to come up with a way to revitalize the Village Shopping Center before it gets too late. We have the main shopping center on the plan above. That's the existing condition. What I know is the Village Tavern is now Emporio. What is it?
Imperator.
Imperator. It'll be the Village Tavern, as long as I look at that plan. It's there in the front. To the right is the bank. The bank itself has been vacant for a long time. Mr. Hassan's company, Oxford Land Development, occupies the second and third floor above the bank. The shopping center itself consists of 45,000 square feet. It's split evenly, first floor and second floor. There are three vacancies on the first floor. The second floor is 80% vacant. That was office. And we're talking your run-of-the-mill office, not medical office, which is thriving in the shopping centers and local communities surrounding us. So this ordinance, it does affect all of your shopping center. Staff was very careful when we went through the ordinance to be sure that this ordinance would not just fit this property, but your other properties within the township should other shopping centers want to take advantage of it. And it would allow the second floor of the main building to be occupied by apartments. We propose 14 two-bedroom apartments and two one-bedroom. Can I do this, or does he have to do it? Could you go to the next slide, please? As part of the proposal, on the left-hand side of the property is a lot of parking. If you guys know this center, it's rarely full. There's lots of parking. So we have an opportunity to revitalize another aspect of the plan. Here it comes. On the left, proposing a medical office building, a 36,000-square-foot first floor for medical office. We can't get the financing unless that lease is iron-tight, to be sure. Planning Commission asked the question, you know, if office is in the tank, why are you proposing a separate building? Medical office, different story. And we can't get the financing to build that unless the lease is executed. On top of that building, we're proposing three two-bedroom apartments as well. In drafting this ordinance and working with staff, they were sure to be clear that some uses that are permitted in shopping center aren't appropriate for this mixed use, having residential, commercial, personal service, and medical office together, and excluded some of the adult uses, the cabaret, the car wash, gas station, a garage, a veterinarian, and cell tower. So they were smart to make sure that those wouldn't cohabitate on a shopping center property. The next slide. Oh, I have to do it. I'm sorry. Okay, this is the center of the shopping center. They plan on having this common space in the center, putting some money into that to revitalize it. We submitted floor plans that show how the second floor of the center would be converted into the apartment use. That's a shot of the proposed medical office building. The ordinance permits what we're proposing by conditional use. So should you adopt this ordinance, we would be back for a conditional use hearing, and also whatever extent land development your staff thinks that we need to go through. So we'll be back. The Montgomery County Planning Commission supports this. Your Township Planning Commission supported it unanimously, and we're asking that you look favorably upon this ordinance.
So the county letter says there are five other properties that would be affected. Is that, at this point, that's what we have, five other properties that could be? So the ultimate effect is that on the five other properties, someone could come in and want to put other apartments.
They could. They aren't limited to, I believe, it's 25%.
And the second floor.
Yeah.
They couldn't put it onto the first floor. It'd be retail and office on the first floor. Second floor would be apartments.
The first floor, obviously, would be a lobby area, I'm sure.
They would have to gain access to the second floor. Remind me how many apartments?
There's 14, 14 two-bedrooms and two one-bedrooms in the shopping center building, and then three two-bedrooms above the medical office.
Any idea what the rent would be?
Good question.
We're figuring the two bedrooms in 1950. My understanding that up north, where Weston is still used to that.
And there is an elevator in there, so people that need an elevator could...
And there would be an elevator at the second floor.
Okay. That's code, right? Well, it's new for us.
We're trying to get ahead of it.
I know, no. Times change.
Yeah, I mean, there's just not the office that we're used to. But Andrew was there on the second floor, you know? It's just disappearing. So we're trying to get ahead before the center fails, and we have more vacancies, and we think that this is a nice blend to have the people who live there that might also, you know, visit the commercial businesses and the personal service that's there as well.
Are there any other area that may have something like this, another county, another...
Well, the live-work-play concept has been growing in Montgomery County and across all the surrounding counties for years. We're trying to find, you know, look at the Promenade in Upper Dublin. That's just thriving. That's all apartments, much more than this. And all the burrows. Ambler is doing the, you know, the first-floor commercial, looking at multifamily on the upper floors. It's a trend. I'm the solicitor for the Doylestown Borough zoning hearing board, and that's all we're seeing is multifamily. Some are standalone, but all of the borough has residential on the second floors.
I have two questions. One is, has anyone talked to the, you know, any of the actual businesses that are there? Are they okay with this idea? Is this something that they're amenable to?
I'll let Harry answer that.
We're enthusiastic because...
Business.
The second floor is...
Right, okay.
The second floor, the air dresser, the escalator, the pizza area, or the deli, that'd be a good place.
Right, absolutely. I just want to make sure that they're not being left out in this conversation.
And renovations won't affect their businesses as they run.
A lot of the heavy-duty renovation will be done during their old hours. So for example, the deli is closed on Sunday. We brought it coming. We'll have to do that on a Sunday. And they all have their leases, the fact that they're putting some work in. They're all applying for that.
My second part of my question is, I know that there's been an increasing concern about affordability of housing and workforce housing, you know, people that work at the delis, the people that work at our firefighters and so forth. So affordability is something that we want to, so I really appreciate you looking at that and saying, can we bring that price down because, you know, have a heart, because everyone has to start out somewhere. And so obviously, that's something that I think would be important to our community to make sure that, you know, when our children are looking for places to live, that they might have a chance to live in our community when things are being priced out so expensively. So I appreciate that and the consideration. So I appreciate that and the consideration of affordability for workforce housing.
Do you have a guess or any kind of inkling on how it would affect the schools?
I'm sorry. The realtor that we're looking at was telling us about a, an apartment complex which had 100 units and said two of those units had children. So we're thinking that what our market is, is young couples and the second bedroom would be a loft.
Makes sense. Thank you. The other thing, obviously, with more housing, it comes traffic. We'll have to look at that, impacts of traffic and so forth as well, because we're also putting Westrum right off the stump road as well. So I want to make sure that we're being thoughtful about that as well.
We also discussed this when we had our staff meeting. It's one of the reasons why we recommended that the board consider the stump road sidewalk extension as well as the pedestrian beacon that would be put at the crosswalk. If you'll recall, when Westrum came in, we talked about the fact that with sidewalks being put in, people who are moving into Westrum, who might be moving here, would have accessibility to walk to the rec center, the township building, continue walking, you know, up to, towards Montgomery Elementary to our park on the other side of the street. So it's all, that's the, the fortunate part of having a staff meeting before it even comes to the planning commission. These things are vetted out and traffic concerns obviously are always primary. And that's why we have Chief Bendig there as well as Chief Wegman. Thank you for that. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions?
Any questions or comments from the public? Any additional questions or comments from the board? With that, unless Ms. Pianzio, anything else to add in closing?
No, thank you.
With that, we will close this public hearing, and this ordinance is now in a position to be voted upon by this board.
Well, I think we need to move to the future and try to save the places that we have. So I'm going to move to authorize the adoption of ordinance 23-336Z to amend the Township zoning code to allow mixed-use complex by conditional use in the S Shopping Center District. Second. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye. Any not in favor? All, okay. Great. Thank you, board. We'll be back. Looking forward to seeing a new and improved, thriving shopping center. Us too. Have a great day. Thank you for continuing to invest in our township. We appreciate it. Number nine, amended stipulated agreement for the Baratia Temple. Mary Ann McConnell.
In December 2018, the Board of Supervisors authorized the Township Solicitor to enter into settlement stipulation resolving the Baratia Temple zoning hearing appeal in the Montgomery County Court of Appeals, docket number 2018-03410, for a proposed two-story learning center. The property owner at this time wishes to modify the proposed improvements and the stipulated agreement to include an unfinished basement for storage purposes only, additional parking, the two-story learning center, and he no longer intends to construct the additions that were proposed initially to the existing temple building. The attached amendment settlement stipulation is attached in your packet. We also have Mr. Carl Weiner here tonight representing the applicant as his attorney, if you have any questions about the amendment.
I just want to make sure that we haven't changed on the restriction of parties, weddings, events, things like that taking place there.
That's expressly, again, included. That has not been changed and it's expressly excluded. And I know it's in here somewhere.
13.2 shall not be used for giving wedding.
So that, that does remain.
But, you know, just to be clear, the only thing that has changed is that we clarified that the first stipulation was silent on the issue of an unfinished basement. It was mentioned in the zoning hearing in January 2018 and somewhere along the line when we negotiated the stipulation in June 2019, there was no mention of it one way or the other. So we had originally come in with a building permit which included a finished basement. We realized the issue at that point, and so we've negotiated to clarify there will be no finished basement. Also, the plans that were drawn up by the architect had a footprint that were 168 feet larger on the two floors. It was 5,412 versus 5,214, something along those lines. I don't hold it exactly to the number, but I know it was 168 square feet. So we actually did not, the architect did not provide, and we had already decided not to build two 500-square-foot additions on the existing temple, which were storage additions and kitchen additions. So in effect, we're giving up 1,000 square feet. We're getting an additional possibly 340 square feet, but we're net negative possibly 700 square feet without pulling out my calculator. But there are really no other changes to the substance of this.
Okay. Thanks for that explanation. Helpful.
And how soon are you looking to start on this project, should this be approved?
Yes.
How soon?
We want to start within, as soon as possible, as soon as we get our permits.
Depending on the outcome of tonight's hearing or meeting, they would submit revised plans to our office for review.
And then permitting and.
And then permitting there.
Moving forward. Okay.
So the answer is yesterday.
Anything? Okay. I'm going to move to authorize the amended settlement stipulation, docket number 2018-03410, and facilitate court approval. Second. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you for your consideration. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 10, Montgomery Township Emergency Management Radio System. Bill Wegman, Fire Chief.
Good evening. As you're aware, we are working with North Wales Water Authority to put a emergency digital radio repeater at the top of the tower. Part of this project is running the cable through the tower. The conduit has already been installed. North Wales Water Authority, through their engineering firm, has given us the price of $20,300 to run the cable from the top of the tower through the conduit to the bottom of the tower, where it would be attached to the radio repeater equipment that we've already bought, but has not been mounted yet. The board previously approved the purchase of the emergency management digital radio system equipment in the amount of $68,387 on April 24th of 2023. Staff budgeted $89,000 in the capital investment plan for this year for this purchase. The board, just for historical information, has also approved the installation of the radio conduit in the amount of $58,472.28 on March 28th of 2022. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors approve the payment for the cost of North Wales Water Authority to install the antenna and necessary cable for $20,300.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
So this 20,000 is in addition to the 58 that was previously approved.
Correct. The 58 was for the conduit, and now this is for the cable to run through the conduit. And then most of the expenses for this project are complete. The only expense that has not been brought before the board will be that I need to have a specialty electrician come out and connect the cable to the antenna. So I'm working on that, but we don't have a timeframe as to when the actual antenna is going to be installed, because we're waiting for some FAA approval, so I'm not sure.
So we're already over budget, so you can go get certified.
We're $313 under budget, but we'll be over budget when the specialty contractor comes out, yes.
Well, it sounds like it's something that we need to do. Okay. If there's no further questions, I'll move to approve the payment of the cost for North Wales Water Authority to install the antenna and necessary cable for $20,300. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Next thing we have is authorization to purchase and install new lockers and flooring, and authorization to donate the used lockers. Chief Bendig.
Good evening. The Police Department is proposing purchasing, installing new lockers and flooring in the men's and women's locker rooms in the Police Department. The flooring and lockers are original to when the municipal facility was constructed in 1992, so they are getting a little long in the tooth. Attached to the following quotes from August 21st of this year from PC Curry Flooring, an authorized CoStarz vendor to provide the flooring and installation at a total cost of $15,690. And an August 16th quote from Robinson Steel Company, a CoStarz cooperative purchasing program member, to provide the requested lockers and installation at a total cost of $29,985. The total cost of this project would be $45,675. Additionally, authorization is requested to donate the used lockers to the Carpentry Vocational Program at the North Monco Tech Center, as permitted under section 1504(c)(2) of the Pennsylvania Second Town, Second Class Township Code. There was, $106,000 was included in the 2023 approved final budget under Buildings and Grounds Capital for these renovations. It is recommended the Board of Supervisors authorize the purchase and installation of the lockers and flooring, as well as the donation of the lockers.
Anybody have any questions? Sounds pretty straightforward and pretty within the budget. So if there's no questions, I'll make a couple motions here. Motion to award the contract for the purchase of the requested flooring and installation to PC Curry Floor Coverings, an authorized vendor under the CoStarz Cooperative Purchase Program, contract 008E231045, at a total cost of $15,690. Second. Is there any public comment? All in favor? Aye. Motion to award the contract for the purchase of the requested lockers and installation to Robinson Steel Company, an authorized vendor under the CoStarz Cooperative Purchase Program, contract number 014E22256, at a total cost of $29,985. Second. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye. And finally, motion to authorize the donation of the used lockers to the Carpentry Program at the North Monco Technical Career Center, as permitted under section 1504.c)(2) of the Pennsylvania Second Class Township Code. Second. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye. Great. Nice donation for them. What, will they use it as a project or just?
They actually, they will use it to keep all of their students' equipment and everything, so they'll be able to keep it in their work area, which they don't have a place to keep it now, so.
Great. All right. Public Works, award the bid for ADA upgrades at the Bethlehem Pike-Gwinnett Crossing Shopping Center area. Greg Reese, Public Works.
Good evening. The Board of Supervisors previously authorized a bid for this project after the police chief and township manager addressed several pedestrian-related accidents at this intersection. The bid was properly advertised and placed on PennBid on August 11th of 23. Bids were opened on September 8th of 2023 at 11:00 a.m. here at the Township Building. Four bids were received ranging from $79,498.80 to $236,960.50. The project had an estimated budget of $70,000. We recommend the board award the bid to Marino Corporation.
The range is just ridiculous. Crazy.
And that's what we've been seeing with most of our projects. And Marino just, and Marino just completed the jug handles on 309, that project, and they, they did a very nice job.
Good. Excellent. Okay. I'm going to move.
Yeah.
Are we all good? I'm going to move to award the bid for the ADA upgrades at Bethlehem Pike and Gwinnett Crossing slash English Village to Marino Corporation, the lowest responsible bidder, in the amount of $79,498.80, per the recommendation of Gilmore and Associates Township Traffic Engineer. Second. Any public comment? All in favor? Aye. All right. And the last fun thing that we have is the Fall 2023 Recreation Programs and Fee Schedule for the Community Center. Floyd, I see Angelina.
Yes, we brought Angelina along also. She's the hugest part of this.
Go Birds!
Of this presentation. Within your packets is the proposed lineup of activities at the Montgomery Township Community Center and for the Fall of 2023. The recommended fees and charges for each program are also included. The schedule will be valid through September 11th through December 31st. All MonRC activities and events will be promoted through our normal publicity channels as well as social media. Diverse lineup of activities, programs and special events provides a diverse menu of recreational activities, a wide range of healthy fitness sessions, fun community special events, and positive educational programs will be available for individuals, for individuals of all ages and abilities within the Montgomery Township area. I'm going to turn it over to the person that's mainly responsible for putting this together. We're, we've become like a real recreation center. We have more than one-page programs. It's, it's, it's very encouraging for me to watch it, because I've been doing this a little while, and to see somebody enthusiastic, both Angelina and Brian, who's working across the street right now. Our team is, is sort of working okay. It seems to be getting a job done. The community, I, I was there this morning, we had over 120 people in there before 9:30. And that's.
It's well done.
It's, it's, it's almost ridiculous in some points, but.
You said it was supposed to happen.
It did, well. It, it is a community, we, we are becoming an entity in the community that is being accepted. And you heard a lot about dollars and cents today and fixing things and, but I think that's something that, that probably will, if you continue, if we all continue, that we'll be very proud that, to what we do for Montgomery Township. It's only the beginning.
Well, I am so proud, and I'm sorry that the room is empty.
That's okay.
But we're going to give you and your team a big round of applause. Because this is what we wanted long ago when we did it, and you have gotten us there. So really, really, thank you for everything.
Yeah. And let me just add that there is so much positive chatter, and I don't spend a lot of time looking at like next door and whatnot, but when people are saying, oh, what can I do with my kid today? People are like, oh, take him over to the Monco Rec Center. And I'm like, yeah, that's where they should go. And the splash pad, same thing. I know it's a kind of a little bit of a hassle in terms of all the stuff, but it's so well-received and appreciated by our community, so thank you.
Thank you. You're great. Very.
Yeah, I want to know, is Audrey doing the? Yeah, you were here that one day. We set up. Audrey can do that.
Our TAMP counselor, who's been there for, this is her fifth or sixth year.
Our camp counselor, who's been there for, this is her fifth or sixth year. And she, she's a dance instructor, she takes notes.
Cute.
How's staffing going?
Yeah, it's good.
Good.
Much better than it looks.
Good.
Yeah.
You've had a lot of interest from different, different age groups, as we've got younger kids coming out of school, a lot more than what we had in the last three years.
It's great. What's your favorite new thing?
I like everything. I love like kids, so like having kids at the rec center, you know, it's so much fun. Like looking at our programs, one of the times that I noticed that we didn't have as many people in the building was that like one to three period before, you know, when kids are in school and people are working. So we made a homeschool class that can kind of bring some kids in during their, use the gym, and get some classes during that time too. Yeah. But we have our normal classes, but then we also added a bunch of new classes. So you'll see like cheerleading's a new one, chess club, which has started today, and had a bunch of kids, theater class, story design, the kids in nature, all those are new ones that we added. Our bocce courts are open for open play, and then we'll have our royal tea party again this year, which is already full, and tons of kids on the waitlist. And then we'll have a superhero meet and greet, which will be new this year. We did like a superhero yoga before, but this year will be like more of a meet and greet, we'll have like three superheroes, so.
Sounds great.
Yeah.
Keep it up, really. Thank you so much for everything and just all the great energy.
All right, well, I guess we need to approve this. I'm going to happily move to approve the twenty twenty-three Fall Recreation Programs and Fee Schedule Amendment as submitted. Second. Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
And again, thank you. Any old business or new business? Anything else?
The only thing I wanted to just mention is that India Fest is coming up.
Oh, hold on, yeah. India Fest is coming up on the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. I put together a signup genius, is that what it's called, signup genius?
And we circulated it to all the department, or the committees that are the volunteers for the township, and I left you stickers that you would ask us to order.
Perfect, so we could have something to get out.
They're at your place, they were at your place, there were a couple in.
Oh, that's what that is, okay, great, great, perfect. So anyway, those are, I just wanted to remind everyone that for your committee people, there are, there's signup genius, so that people can, committees can sign up to, together even. We just have two spots per, I want to say two-hour period, two to three hours for each of the two days, so that people can cover that and give out. I have some stickers, that's what this package is, what, where, I wasn't sure. I get Amazon pick packages all the time, so.
Just to clarify, that the India Fest is taking place at the Baratia Temple.
Yes, exactly. So, anyways, we ordered some stickers to give out to people. So some little police officer ones, and some other fun little firefighter stickers and so forth to give out, so. Right, because everyone wants to be a firefighter and police officer. Great, that's my only addition, I think only we have two people signed up right now, so we need to fill that up. Coming up later this month.
All right. Anybody else have anything? I'm going to move to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Meetings adjourned, thank you so much, everyone, have a great night, everyone.
Look, kind of stick.
Aw, that's cute.